Good evening colleagues and welcome to the meeting of the Borough Council. This meeting is being recorded and live streamed. And a great welcome to those members in the public gallery and those watching from home. If any member of the public or press would like to record the proceedings themselves, please do so from the public gallery. If the fire alarm sounds, those sitting in the public gallery can exit through the doors behind you. And those sitting in the council chamber, leave the room by the doors behind me and make your way to the front of the town hall. Disturbers, can you ensure your mobile phones are switched off, please, and other electronic devices are switched off or on silent? Any member wishing to speak on the agenda, use the microphones available. And make sure, because it's being livestreamed, that you speak into the microphone. Some members have a habit of speaking over here, so we'll warn Canatier, especially if you've got deaf problems, deafness problems. Now, full council today will only deal with the business that's on the summons. So the first item of business is declarations of interest. Does any member wish to make a declaration before we move on to the next item of business? I have received apologies from councillor McKeown. Are there any other members or officers aware of any apologies?
Sorry, Mr Mayor, it's a declaration of interest.
Right.
Mr Mayor, I would like to declare my personal interest as a member of the Standards Committee, who conducted the hearing in March in respect of item four. As this is a personal interest only, I can stay in this meeting of Borough Council for that agenda item, participate in the discussion and in participating in any vote taken. Thank you.
Okay. Councillor Clare?
Mr Mayor, I'd like to declare a personal interest in item four on the agenda. As a former member of the Standards Committee and someone that was involved in the deliberations with the case, I've deserved the right to remain in the room and obviously participate in any debate that follows.
Councillor Johnson?
I'd like to apologize from councillor Guy. Mr Mayor.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. I would like to declare my personal interest as a member of the Standards Committee, who conducted the hearing in March as respect to item four. As this is a personal interest only, I can stay in this meeting of Borough Council for the agenda item, participate in any discussion and participate in any vote taken.
Councillor Foster?
Thank you, Mr Mayor. I would like to declare my personal interest as a member of the Standards Committee, who conducted the hearing in March in respect of item four. I have been advised I can stay in the meeting and participate in discussion and participate in any vote. However, I have some concerns. I have seen evidence where at a similar hearing involving councillor Robertson, members of that Standards Committee were advised to leave the chamber during the debate. In the interest of clarity and consistency, which is paramount in standards, I believe for future such agenda items, clarity needs to be sought. It appears there may have been one rule for then and another for now. However, taking everything into account, I intend to stay in the meeting tonight. Thank you, Mr Mayor.
Councillor Robertson?
Thank you, Mr Mayor. Declare a person rest as a complaint in fight and for, which is obviously proven justified. Thank you.
Councillor Kilgore?
Thanks, Mr Mayor. Just to declare the apologies for councillor M Walsh and councillor E Walsh, please.
Are there any other declarations of interest?
Mr Mayor, not a declaration of interest, but apologies from councillor Patty.
Thank you. Councillor Portous?
Thank you. Mr Mayor?
Okay. The next item of business is the minutes of the meeting of the council held on the sixteenth of May, two O two three. Are they accepted as a correct record? Yeah. The next item of business is Mayor's announcements and communications. Colleagues, I'd like to remind everyone that our fantastic South Tyneside Festival summer programme starts this weekend with the biggest carnival of its kind in the North East. The hugely popular South Tyneside Festival Parade is this weekend on Saturday, the first of July. And the parade will make its way from outside of South Shields Town Hall to Bens Park, where there will be even more incredible entertainment to enjoy. I would also like to inform colleagues that following our meeting in January, there will be a special meeting of Borough Council on Wednesday, the twenty sixth of July. Colleagues will recall that in our meeting on the twelfth of January, we considered a freedom of the borough honours for South Shields-born and world-renowned animator and artist Sheila Grabah. And we agreed to confer the highest honour the council can bestow at a special meeting in the summer. So formal invitations will be sent out this week. Finally, colleagues, I would very much like for us to reenact a historic photo that was taken to commemorate the coronation of His Majesty King George the Fifth, and features members and officials of the then South Shields Town Council. The atmospheric picture from twenty-two June nineteen eleven is framed and displayed just outside the chamber room here on the on the wall. And with the exception of the annual council meeting held last month, our meeting today is the first ordinary meeting of the council to bring all elected members of South Tyneside together since the coronation of His Majesty King Charles the Third. And that's almost a hundred and twelve years to the day of the original image in the anteroom. Could I therefore request that elected members turn to face the camera towards Tim to my far left, so that the council can stage, he's hiding behind the television at the moment, the council can stage a similar image that can be recorded for the future, displayed and documented within the history of South Tyneside and the council. Thank you very much, Tim. Thank you, colleagues. The next item of business is to consider a report of the Director of Governance and Corporate Affairs, which provides an update on the outcome of the investigation into and hearing of complaint C thirty-four, which took place on the fifteenth of March two O two three. Thank you, Mr Moser. I will ask councillor Carter as the executive member on Standards Committee as the person nominated to speak to Borough Council to move a report. Councillor Carter?
Thank you, Mr Mayor. Colleagues, I am presenting this report to you today as the member of the Standards Committee nominated to answer questions at full council. Standards Committee wish to update Borough Council as to the outcome of the investigation into and hearing of complaint C thirty-four, which took place on the fifteenth of March twenty twenty-three. Colleagues, I trust you have all read the report and do not propose to read out the report verbatim. It is public available to all members, press and the public. However, I think it is important to be very clear upfront. The purpose of this report is not to provide information for Borough Council so that you can reexamine the investigating officer's findings or the content of the final report. This is the sole responsibility of the Standards Committee and we conducted a hearing and tested the robustness of the final report. The Standards Committee found that the subject member's behaviour was not on this occasion aligned to the council's acceptable standards. Nor is it the purpose of this report to provide Borough Council with information to conduct a further investigation or rehearing or to provide comment on whether or not there has or has not been a failure to comply with the code of conduct. Again, this is the role and responsibility of the Standards Committee. Borough Council have received from Standards Committee recommendations which are set out in paragraphs thirty-four to thirty-eight of the report. The Standards Committee determined that these recommendations represent a proportionate and appropriate response. This is the decision of Standards Committee and it is not for Borough Council today to either challenge or decide alternative appropriate sanctions and penalties. Borough Council must agree or not the recommendations only. I stress these points in the hope that any discussion or debate on this matter is within the correct scope and does not expand further. This is important for the integrity of our standards framework. The Standards Committee determined that its findings and decision be referred to the next ordinary meeting of Borough Council following the hearing, with a recommendation that Borough Council, rather than the Standards Committee itself, issue a formal censure to the subject member and that Borough Council remove the subject member from his position as a member of Constitution Committee and not to be reappointed to that committee for and during the municipal year twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four. These are the two key recommendations for Borough Council to consider today. The Standards Committee determined a number of other findings, including that the monitoring officer be instructed to refer the matter to Northumbria Police for investigation of any potential offences under the Localism Act two thousand and eleven, so that the police could finalise their involvement in this matter. Findings around member induction material and member training and development more generally. Information and updates are provided on these within the report. Mr Mayor, I move the report and ask colleagues to agree the recommendations set out in sections thirty-four to thirty-eight, which will ensure that the council comply with the decision notice of the Standards Committee in respect of complaint C thirty-four. Thank you, Mr Mayor.
Thank you, Councillor Carter. Is that motion seconded? Are there any questions or does any member wish to speak to the report? Councillor Francis first, please.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. Obviously, as we've heard, we're not here to rehash the investigation and go through that process again. That's already happened. But the report does highlight obviously the council's proud values and the O of proud stands for open and honest. So I think that's worth considering in this context and also references the Nolan principles of public life and just to quote the seventh principle, says holders of public office should actively promote and robustly support the principles and challenge poor behaviour wherever it occurs. And so in line with that, I'd like to thank the complainant for raising this and thank the investigating officer for their work and the work of the committee. And I would like to support the findings of the committee. And I'm sure as a consequence, we'll all reflect on the way all of our actions and behaviour reflects back on South Tyneside Council and how that impacts public perception of who we are and what we do. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. I'll start with a point of information. Just from the report being read out, I know it was mentioned it's the sole responsibility of the Standards Committee. But I would I would counter that by saying it's everybody's responsibility because we're here to sanction the recommendation from Standards Committee. But I'll go on to what I was going to say. I wanted to speak specifically about the dispensation request for a disclosable pecuniary interest made by councillor Malcolm in twenty twenty related to C thirty-four and within detailed within this report. In this case, in this case, it clearly showed in the report that no dispensation request had been granted for councillor Malcolm prior to September twenty twenty. This was in respect of his role as the Chair of South Tyneside Chair at South Tyneside Homes. Yet, at the same time, we had formal allegations and investigations in place against councillor Malcolm. The dispensation request was submitted by councillor Malcolm in September twenty twenty and it was granted. Crackers. The rationale given at the time was that this dispensation was going forward only and did not consider any potential historical breaches or outstanding allegations. Ultimately, the scenario where someone has serious allegations against them for not declaring disclosable pecuniary interest. Yet, when they apply for a dispensation for the very same disclosable pecuniary interest, they're granted it. It's just bizarre. Allegations and historical breaches surely need to be considered with any future dispensation requests to the Standards Committee. Thank you, Mr Mayor.
Councillor Robertson?
Thank you, Mr Mayor. How long am I allowed to speak for, Mr Mayor? Please?
Two minutes.
Two. First of all, I agree with the sanctions and what's been brought before the council tonight. I don't think they're severe enough as someone that's been on that side of the fence. And it does appear that the Standards Committee, which is heavily weighted with Labour, is obviously going to protect Labour. So again, you look at page two hundred and ninety-two of the constitution and it says code of conduct for elected members, the seven principles of public life. Accountability, holders of public office are accountable to the public for their decisions and actions and must submit themselves to the scrutiny necessary to ensure this. There he goes tonight. He's breaching the Nolan principles. He hasn't got the spine to turn up for the scrutiny in front of the full council. Then you look at the next one down, honesty. Holders of public office should be truthful, right? In the council papers tonight, at page seven relating to this, it says, police interviewed the subject member under caution for offences pertaining to section four thirty-four of the localism act. The subject member provided a consistent account as provided throughout the internal investigation. Namely, he was unaware of the requirement to disclose a pecuniary interest of the meetings. And had he been aware of this at the time, he would have complied with this requirement. Now, I've submitted paperwork when this investigation was going on to the mountain officer, who done an excellent job, by the way, as did the Standards Committee. And part of the documents that I submitted as evidence was the minutes of the meeting twenty-first of June two thousand and twelve. Now, the then mountain officer, Brian T Scott, couldn't have done a better report informing members what they had to do under the D P I's and what was a criminal offence. So as in public office holders were honesty, this report told every member on the twenty-first of June what they had to do. Now councillor Malcolm's misled the Standards Committee by saying he wasn't aware. He's misled. The police under caution and tonight he's allowing this council to be misled. This twenty-first of June report confirms he was fully aware. Thank you, Mr Mayor.
And that's all you're going to say, is it?
Thank you.
Obviously, that's your view. That's your viewpoint. That's your viewpoint. It's not what the Standards Committee have come to. Okay. Um. For just a um, it's not a denial, but a reinforcement of what the Standards Committee is. It's a balanced committee. It's not, you know, as you suggested, Labour controlled. It's a very politically balanced committee and they have come to the conclusion. So there we go. All right. Would you like to speak? What is your point of order?
I think you misunderstood what I was saying.
What is your point of order?
Well, you're saying that I said the Standards Committee got it wrong. The Standards Committee got it right. I didn't say they got it wrong. They were misled. Thank you.
A point of it's a point of information or a point of order. Right, thank you. Councillor Roberts? If you want to stay seated, stay seated. If you've got a bad back, that goes for anybody else who may have any disabilities. Please remain seated. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. I would like to thank the monitor officer for the work that she did investigating this initial complaint and complying with the report for the Standards Committee and for the report in front of us today. I think it's been very well done. I have have to say that I'm very disappointed, but not surprised that Mr councillor Malcolm has once again failed to turn up and face the wrath of his colleagues. Well, at least on this side of the of the chamber. And apologize to the public, many of whom who were watching this meeting for failing to comply with the law as set out on the Localism Act. Whilst today I was supposed, sorry, whilst today I will be supporting the sanctions recommended by the report, they do not go far enough. And I am especially disappointed by Northumberland Police failure to prosecute Mr Mount, councillor Mountain, sorry. For some time, I and indeed many of the public speak to feel that Northumberland Police have been politicized. Perhaps this is because the current Police and Crime Commissioner seems to be more interested in the Labour nominations to become North East elect first elected mayor. Sorry?
We don't need any interruptions. I'm going to interrupt. Is this relevant to the report?
Well, this is this. And what I'm just seeing is that the Police and Crime Commissioner is not.
That's an opinion. It's not. It's not relevant to the report that's been presented to the. Okay, thank you. Well, just letting you know, it's not relevant to the proceedings tonight. Thank you. It's it's not relevant to the report that's presented. Thank you very much, councillor. Thank you, councillor Roberts. Thank you, councillor Roberts. Colleagues, council has to note the contents and purpose of this report and it contains three clear recommendations, three clear recommendations. So I'm going to go through them in turn. The first one, I'm speaking councillor Thompson. You've had your time. You will not come back and you'll not come back in now. Do not interrupt me, councillor Thompson. Do not interrupt. Count. Do not interrupt me now, councillor. Councillor, do not interrupt me. Okay, I'm speaking and I'm going to speak. And you're not going to come in with your point of information. You're not going to come in with a with a with a report. You've already spoken yet tonight. Okay, you might have been used to it in the past, but you're not getting away with it now. All right. Right, here we go. The first is a recommended councillor Thompson, councillor Thompson. I'll give you a warning now. Okay, I'm speaking. I've stood on my feet. Respect is needed in this chamber and that includes everybody. The first is a recommendation from the Standards Committee that the council issue a formal censure to the subject member. Is that agreed?
Agreed.
It's recommended by the Standards Committee that the subject member be removed from his position as a member of Constitution Committee. Council is asked to note that the subject member has not been appointed to the membership of the Constitution Committee for the municipal year two thousand and twenty-three to two thousand and twenty-four. However, Borough Council are asked to make a resolution about any future committee appointments and amendments for the remainder of two thousand and twenty-three, twenty-four and agree with the recommendation from the Standards Committee that the subject member not be appointed in the event of a vacancy on the Constitution Committee if it was to arise. Is that agreed? We're you. One? Yes. Mm-hmm. Have you got five members? Okay. We'll come to it. We'll come to an end vote. I'll just finish the third recommendation. Mm-hmm. Is that is that on the on the three recommendations? Right. It's also recommended that the council note that the monitoring officer referred the matter to Northumbria Police for investigation as instructed by Standards Committee and that the police have now finalized their involvement in this matter. With councillor Robertson, can you stop interrupting, please? Stop interrupting. So Northumbria Police have finalized their involvement in this matter with no further action and there is no work underway by the Standards Committee to consider member. Well, we need to consider member induction and member training and development material. So is that duly noted? Noted. Right, we'll come back. I'm just going to take some legal advice here because when the first item was discussed to a formal subject, a formal censure to the subject member, there was no dissenting voice. So two seconds. Thank you for that, mountain officer. So there's no vote on the first one because that was went through. The second one, you can have your name vote. So we're now going to vote on the recommendation that the subject member is removed from his position as member of the Constitution Committee. And it's asked to note that he not be appointed to the membership of that committee should a vacancy arise. Okay. So, monitoring officer?
Thank you, Mr Mayor. Elected members, I will read each of your names alphabetically and I would ask that you please indicate clearly using the microphone as to whether you are for, against or are abstaining from the vote. Councillor Bell?
For.
Councillor Barclay?
For.
Councillor Best?
For.
Councillor Brennan? Councillor Bristol? Councillor Carter? Councillor Clare?
For.
Councillor Cunningham? Councillor P Dean?
For.
Councillor S Dean?
For.
Councillor Dixon? Councillor Donaldson? Councillor Ellison?
For.
Councillor Ford?
For.
Councillor Foreman? Councillor Forster? Councillor Francis?
For.
Councillor Gibson? Councillor Herbert? Councillor Huntley? Councillor Keegan? Councillor Kennedy? Councillor Kilgawa? Councillor Lamont? Councillor Lisk? Councillor K Maxwell? Councillor N Maxwell? Councillor McKeown? Councillor Mellon? Councillor Milburn? Councillor Miln? Councillor Peacock? Councillor Portouse? Councillor Potts? Councillor Proudlock? Councillor Purvis? Councillor Roberts? Councillor Robertson? Councillor Smith? Councillor Strike? Councillor Thompson? Councillor Traynor? Councillor Welsh?
For.
Councillor Yeh?
For.
And that's who's present?
Forty-four, everybody present.
So the vote was unanimous, forty-four present members and forty-four voting to accept that recommendation. We're now going to move on to the next item, item five, to consider a report of the Director of Governance and Corporate Affairs to amend the membership of some outside bodies. I will ask councillor Bell as lead member for Governance, Finance and Corporate Services to move the report. Councillor Bell?
Thank you, Mr Mayor. Colleagues, for completeness, you will have noted an updated version of this report circulated to you all on Monday, the twenty-sixth of June and included addition paragraphs four point six and four point seven and recommendation twelve
and 4.7 and recommendation 12.2, part E. Notwithstanding, I trust colleagues will agree, this report is fairly straightforward. At the annual meeting of council, we all receive nominations of councillors to serve on each of its committees and outside bodies and we all agree and appointed to those committees and outside bodies. It is necessary to do a little bit tidying up here and on a small number of appointments made to the outside bodies, we do need to make changes. It is really as a result of timing and information known to us at the time of our annual meeting. And agree the recommendations will ensure that our governance arrangements and administrative records are up to date and clear and that all councillors are fully aware of the changes. Mr Mayor, I move the report and ask colleagues to agree the recommendations set out in section 12, which will ensure we are best placed to properly fulfil our partnership working and influencing roles on behalf of the council. Thank you, Mr Mayor.
Thank you, councillor Bell. Is that motion seconded? Thank you, councillor Huntley. Are there any questions or does any member wish to speak to the report? No? Okay. Council colleagues have noted the contents of the report. It's recommended that the council nominate and agree that the members set out in paragraph 12.2A to the JTC Overview and Scrutiny Committee for 2023/2024. Is that agreed? We're also asked to note that the relevant lead member for the Northumbria Police and Crime Panel is the lead member for housing and community safety. Is that duly noted? We asked to nominate and agree that the leader of the council to be appointed to Sigma and the lead member for Adults, Health and Independence to be appointed to Trust Governor for Cumbria, Northumberland, Tyne and Weir, NHS Foundation Trust. Is that agreed? And finally, we're asked to nominate and agree that the lead member for Voluntary Sector Partnerships and Equalities represent the council on the North East Migration Partnership. Is that agreed? Thank you, colleagues. The next item of business is to consider a report of the Director of Business and Resources on Future Councils Programme Pilot. You're going to be busy tonight, councillor Bell. I will ask councillor Bell as lead member for Governance, Finance and Corporate Service to move the report. Councillor Bell?
Thank you, Mr Mayor. This report provides an update on the Future Councils Programme Pilot. This council is one of only eight councils selected to be a pilot within the new Future Councils Programme, which is part of Local Digital within the Department of Leveling Up Housing and Communities. We are in fact the only North East council in this pilot. In fact, we are the only council north of Leicester invited to take part. The aim of Future Councils is to help councils in England become modern and resilient. There will be projects to build cyber resilience and security and to assess and build our levels of digital maturity. Work is also taking place to fully understand how residents and customers currently contact the council and how they would like to do this in the future. This will inform plans to replace the current aging customer relationship management system and the plans for our next digital and ICT strategy. There is no intention whatsoever to remove the option of contacting the council by phone or in person, but an increasing number of our residents are choosing to contact us online and at a time and location that is most convenient for them. Offering more and better digital services for those who want to use them will allow us to spend more time working with those who need direct help and support. As part of the pilot, we will also be working with researchers to help them understand the challenges facing councils as they modernise and become more resilient and how these can be overcome. Councillors therefore asked to note the contents of this report and I thank you, Mr Mayor.
Is that motion seconded?
Seconded.
Are there any questions or does any member wish to speak to the report? Councillor Forster?
Thank you, Mr Mayor, and thank you councillor Bell for the report. I'm sure all members will welcome this report and have noted it's fully covered and funded at the tune of three quarters of a million pound by the government's Department for Leveling Up and Housing. I wasn't expecting to see your hands to go up and I wouldn't expect anybody but me to stand up with the knowledge of fact that despite the fact many members on many occasions have stood up and criticised this government for spending or indeed the lack of it. So excellent report. Thank you for it and it's been most welcome. Thank you very much.
Councillor Robertson?
Thank you, Mr Mayor. Just to thank councillor Bell for the report. The amount of time that councillor Bell spends on her feet is unbelievable and I just wish some of the other cabinet members would do something in this chamber for the £20,000 a year. Well done, John. Thank you very much.
Leader of the council, councillor Dixon?
Yes, just thank you very much, Mr Mayor, and we welcome the £750,000 that's been allocated to South Tyne Side. It's just a shame that the government didn't look at South Tyne Side and give us the leveling up round one and leveling up round two when we put in our bids for supporting this South Tyne Side, Mr Mayor.
Just to reiterate what councillor Dixon's just said. It wasn't an easy task and it never is an easy task putting bids into this government. I have to be honest. We have been successful in quite a lot but unsuccessful in just as many. It is welcome that we can do this for our residents and for this council because cybersecurity is a very, very important task and it forms one of the highest corporate risks this council faces. So the money is welcome. It will help us. I'm just hoping that they do look favourable on bids that we put in with the next phase of levelling up and that we are not unsuccessful this time. Thank you.
Thanks for that, councillor Bell and councillor Dixon. As the report noted, thank you. The next item of business is to receive questions under procedure rule eight. No questions have been received under this rule. The next item of business is to deal with petitions received under council procedure rule nine. One petition has been received under this rule. As per the council procedure rules, we will not debate the petition today. After the petition has been presented in accordance with the process set out in the Constitution, I will move that the petition be referred to the appropriate body. Councillor Milne, I understand you've been asked to present the petition on behalf of the petitioner. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. The petition is to save Chitauri Community Association, South Shields, as there are many young people and adults who utilise the centre both in the local community and surrounding area, as well as saving the spacious green area attached from development as it is a lifeline for many. The petition has 2,008 signatories in total with 1,025 of those signatories living within the borough. Thank you.
Thank you very much, councillor Milne. In accordance with standard order, the petition stands referred to the Director of Regeneration and Environment and that's the appropriate body for further consideration. There are no petitions presented to the meeting of the Borough Council held in January and therefore no updates to report from the appropriate bodies. We now move on to item nine. In accordance with council procedure rule 10, to consider the following notice of motion. There is only one motion to be considered under this rule today and I will explain the procedure for motions. I will ask the proposer of the motion to move the motion. And he or she may speak for up to five minutes. I will then ask if the motion is seconded. The seconder will be allowed to speak for three minutes or reserve the right to speak later in the debate. The motion will then open up for debate by members whom which they may each speak up to three minutes and may move amendments. Any amendment must be relevant to the motion. Only one amendment will be moved and discussed at any one time. If the motion is not carried, other amendments to the original motion may be moved. If an amendment is carried, the motion as amended takes the place of the original motion and becomes the substantive motion to which any further amendments are moved. I know that's a bit long-winded, but I'm pointing out the legal and technical aspects to what we are about to do. I hope everybody is comfortable with that and I hope everybody understands that procedure. Motion one has been submitted by councillors Thompson, Brennan, Kennedy, Milburn, Forster, Robertson and Roberts. Councillor Thompson, please present your motion and could you speak into your microphone, please?
Always do. It's down there. Thank you, Mr Mayor. Before the clock starts on that five minutes, I'd like to raise a point of order. That point of order is related to...
What is your point of order?
I'm speaking.
Right, what is your point of order?
You need it in two seconds. You asked for the point of order. I'm trying to explain it. My point of order is to query whether correct procedure is being followed in relation to requests to table a point of information. Two point of informations have been raised by myself to yourself and have been completely dismissed. Could I get a ruling or rationale for that, please, Mr Mayor?
Well, as I was speaking, members must be, must wait for the relevant speech to be concluded before making a point of information. I will, you interrupted me and you interrupted me again. What I would have done was bring in the end of the speech. When the point of information you've got to give, you know, it's got to be about an alleged inaccuracy. It's got to be about a matter that can clarify and if you miss the point of information, you know, I'm sorry about that, but it's gone. Okay?
I think...
But I will quote a point of order to you. All right?
I've got it written down here.
I will point out a point of order to you.
I could quote it to you as well, Mr Mayor. I think that's a waste of time.
Under procedure rules D 12.15, the mayor's ruling on a point of order, a point of information or a personal explanation is final and will not be open to discussion.
You have to hear it first.
That is that.
You have to hear it first.
Okay, thank you. So can you present your motion, please?
Thank you, Mr Mayor.
Thank you.
As we've seen in the previous report on digital and ICT and the Future Councils Programme, modernising technology for local authorities so they can keep pace with the times is very important. I would love to think that this three quarters of a million government grant could be utilised for us to keep pace with the times and bring our recording and hosting of council meetings and committees up to date and to the level many other authorities have. Unfortunately, and I understand, this investment is specifically for background IT services and cybersecurity. But what the digital and ICT programme and government investment highlights is the need to change and improve so we can best serve our residents. And that's exactly what this motion today is for. In relation to openness, transparency and accountability and hosting our council meetings and committees, we would bring change, change that so many other councils have already implemented to best serve their residents. Of course, we can all cherry pick data on this subject depending on our positions. But surely nobody here today can deny that if we are going to improve public engagement here in South Tyne Side, key factor for this will be by improving visibility. Visibility of how our council committee structures work and ultimately how and by who important decisions are made. Councils like Birmingham, East Riding, Leicestershire, Trafford, Lichfield, Doncaster, Colchester, Southwark, Cambridgeshire, Luton, Thoreau, East Devon, Derby, Newcastle in the Line, Northumberland, Durham, the list goes on and on and on. Simply, a vast amount of councils have a range of their key meetings and committees recorded and hosted on YouTube. All of this is for the benefits of their residents and for elected members. But here, we in South Tyne Side record and host just one meeting. In the last constitutional review, there was a significant push from the Labour Group to steer change and debate away from the one meeting we do record here, full council in the chamber. And steer it to the committee structures and meetings. Well, if change and debate is decided somewhere else, we need to make sure full openness, transparency and accountability follows there so the public has full visibility of the decision making process. As the peer review team recently stated, and I'll quote the peer review team directly, ensuring that decisions are as transparent as possible and linked clearly to the council's evidence base is important for improving transparency in decision making. This peer team recommendation highlights the importance of transparency in relation to decision making. Simply, the best way we can do this is by improving visibility of our council meetings and committees so the public can see how and by who important decisions are made. I've touched on public engagement already and nowhere is it more important that we develop and improve public engagement than in our community area forums. I hope today our champion for democracy, sorry, our champion for democracy councillor Best can speak again as she did in the last Riverside CAF where she spoke very strongly in favour of recording and hosting our CAF meetings and stated it was a high priority. It is a high priority because if we improve public engagement in our CAFs where we are closest to our residents and communities, it will be largely because we host recordings of our CAF meetings to develop awareness and interest of what we do and show what, as a council, we can offer our communities and what we do for our communities. I hope everyone here today can support that this motion is referred to Cabinet for consideration. Thank you, Mr Mayor.
Thank you. Is the motion seconded? Do you wish to speak now or do you reserve your right to?
I'll speak now, Mr Mayor. That's okay.
Okay, councillor.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. This motion certainly does have merit and I can see nothing wrong in making this council and subsequently its committees more transparent and accessible to the public and people who it serves. Currently, we have an opaque system with regards to committees where minutes are often verbatim, that simply says, a councillor says, without naming said councillor. This system, the current system, allows a cloak of ambiguity where we as councillors are not held accountable and words spoken are often lost to the individual councillors who speak them. Live streaming committees will bring this council into the modern age, making us more accountable to the people we serve. This is not something we should be making excuses for and I think it should be implemented as soon as possible so more people can access local democracy and say in action. Thank you, Mr Mayor.
Thanks very much. The motion is now open to debate by members. Do any members wish to ask a question, speak or move an amendment? Councillor Francis?
Thank you, Mr Mayor. I'd like to move an amendment to the motion and copies have been circulated in advance.
Yeah.
I think the paperwork should make it clear what the changes are, what the proposed changes are. There's some text that I propose to delete, which is highlighted in yellow and struck through. There's text I intend to insert and that is in red text. Do you need me to read through the amended motion or are you happy for me to proceed?
First of all, I need somebody to second your amendment. Thank you. Do any members wish to ask a question or speak on the amendment? No. Does anybody, I'm just... No, does anybody, I'm just listening to what Nicola's saying, the other monitor officer. Is everybody comfortable with the fact that the paperwork was circulated regarding the amendment to the motion? Have all read it, have all got a copy in front of us? Okay, two seconds councillor. Everybody comfortable, everybody comfortable with that? Right, councillor Robertson?
Thank you, Mr Mayor. I might have got it wrong and I might have been dreaming because I dream about the council, obviously. Nicola Robertson, can you confirm? Did we recently?
Just taking some advice from the monitor officer here. So councillor, can you just sit down for one moment, please? Councillor Francis?
You want me to just speak on it?
Yes.
Yeah, okay.
If everybody's comfortable with the paperwork they've received.
Yeah, okay, thank you. Okay, I'd like to start then by trying to find some common ground that hopefully we can all agree on. And I mentioned earlier the council's proud values and the O of proud standing for open and honest. And I think this motion is in line with that. We want the public to trust that we're operating and appropriately behaving and we're open on us about what we do here when we're acting on their behalf. We want meetings to be inclusive and accessible for local residents. We want people to feel that local democracy is done with them and by them and for them, not to them. And, uh, yeah, we want to keep pace with the times as councillor Thompson mentioned. And thus I totally agree with the intention of the motion. So question might be why amend it? And there's a couple of changes that have been made for clarity in the first page. And then secondly, I wanted to attempt to strengthen the motion and make it easier to vote for and support and potentially remove some of the barriers. I'm mindful of the potential cost implications and concerned and concerns over implementing additional filming and the additional labour and costs that might be incurred if that's done in the same way that these Borough Council meetings are currently done. And that would be a significant additional spend and that's funds that might have a greater value or impact if they were used elsewhere. And obviously, one of our council's five ambitions is to target support to make things fairer. And I don't think we'd want to take money away from somewhere where it's vitally needed in order to make this change. So I'm keen to explore the cost effectiveness and alternate ways that we can do this without accruing a huge bill. And so this motion and the amended motion is not committing to any specific action or any additional spend tonight. The motion and the amendment firmly places the ball in the executive's court to fully investigate, you know, a cost benefit analysis and make a decision or make a referral back to Borough Council to make sure that we're not taking resources from where they might be needed elsewhere. But at the same time, we allow what we do here to be accessible and viewable and open to members of the public. Thank you.
Okay. Do any members wish to ask a question? Yeah, the amendment has been seconded. You know, we've recorded that. Okay, who's seconding for you councillor Francis? Yes, that's right, you did say, you did say that, yes, that's correct. We're just making sure it's reinforced here, all right? Do any members wish to ask a question or speak on the amendment? Yep. I'll take councillor Forster first.
Uh, so you, Mr Mayor, not only do I support the motion, but I also support the amended motion. And if you read page thirty-six of the council's very own South Tyneside News, which I have a copy here, so do the council. On page thirty-six, under the heading Democracy A Year Of Action, and I quote, "Democracy A Year Of Action is a new campaign aimed at helping raise awareness of South Tyneside's council, what it does and how it works", unquote. Further in the article, it says, and I quote, "The council will build on wider awareness campaigns to help promote a greater understanding of the different roles of committees and elected members all year round." So surely this motion and what was published in this document, this paper, ticks all the boxes. I understand funding may be an issue, understand funding may be an issue in forward this motion. Again, part of the answer is in the council's very own South Tyneside News, page six, Feed The Fish. A twenty thousand two hundred pound recycling bin on the seafront aimed at the Protect The Ocean campaign, no mention of stopping or throwing water, dumped untreated sewage, by the way. However, the council found ten thousand two hundred pounds to part fund this recycling bin. So surely funds can be found to fund transparency in this town hall, which is urgently needed. Thank you, Mr Mayor.
Councillor Robertson?
Thank you, Mr Mayor. So two points please, how long am I allowed? Because is it minute, two minutes, three minutes? Thank you. First of all, I'm not happy with the amendment because, again, I'll repeat what I said earlier, I thought we had all received something of the monitor officer saying that you couldn't put an amendment in that was just twisting a sentence or adding a word or two because it's never going to end and that's exactly what this is. I know the Greens will say, well, no, well, we're saying where the money will come from. Common sense tells you that that would have to be exhausted properly. So if we're not going to come, if we're all not going to comply with this idea of little silly amendments are not going to be accepted by the monitor officer, we can all play tit for tat in every motion that they put in, I'll add a cauliflower or a cabbage or a carrot, right? If we want to play that game, leave people's motions the way they are because this is stupidity, amendments that don't mean anything. So that's my first point. And as in the transparency of the meetings being televised, this is the only meeting that's televised, right? We've got the scrutiny committees, we've got the standards committee, we've got the housing performance panel, there's committees that it wouldn't really benefit having on video, but there's committees that would be really good to have televised, including the cabinet at times other than the private stuff. Because I keep on repeating and it's not a dig, the public may be watching this tonight and they'll see Joanne Bell on her feet all the time and they'll see this one, that one on their feet all the time. But there's so many councillors that don't open their mouth in this chamber and the public who voted for them are not hearing them. These same councillors can be getting ten thousand a year for being chairs of committees, i.e. a thousand pound for a one-hour meeting. These people should be able to look at the scrutiny committees, the standards committees, at the very least, to see what goes on in the town hall because these full councils don't give a proper picture of it. Yeah. The money's there to sensibly do it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. Just like to say I support this amendment from councillor Francis. I see this as supportive and constructive. Thank you.
Ian, could you turn your mic off, please?
Thank you, Mr Mayor. Here we go yet again with this motion. Déjà vu two or is it three now? I'm not sure. This motion proposes to refer to Cabinet to investigate live streaming several committee and council meetings. This council has on at least two occasions in the last year debated and rejected this motion mainly for logistical and financial reasons. Those reasons have not changed, nor will Cabinet be able to change them. The cost to livestream this council meeting, as we are doing now, is one thousand nine hundred and ninety-four pound per meeting, made up of several different components, including staffing costs. If we were to do what this motion suggests, we would need to find nearly one hundred and sixty thousand pound to livestream these meetings. This figure would increase significantly if other meetings were requested online. There is no provision in the medium term financial plan to do this. The budget was agreed by this council only four months ago. No amendments or provision for this was brought forward by the councillors now requesting this change. The motion does not give any suggestions whatsoever as to which services will need to be cut to pay for this. There will be a location problem as the setup we have for live streaming can only be done from this council chamber. All meetings will therefore have to relocate here at a time when we are trying to take the council, in particular the community area forums, which have been mentioned, to the public and not the other way around. We have looked at other ways of possibly doing this, but there will still be high costs involved. The purchase of mobile equipment, the staffing costs of operators and IT support staff, microphone link-ups, moving the equipment and staff to different venues, et cetera. It is not cost effective or necessary to do this at this time as the numbers who are watching the live stream council meetings vary from meeting to meeting, but figures have shown a marked decrease. In fact, there are forty-five members of the public watching the proceedings now at a cost of one thousand nine hundred and ninety-four pound. All the meetings noted in this motion are open to the public. They can access the minutes and the agenda seven days before the meetings as they are also available to the public. In fact, anyone in the public gallery, as the mayor pointed out at the beginning of this meeting, can film any public meeting and livestream it if they so wished. Obviously, members of committees have to be present to find out what is happening and as several opposition members do not attend particularly scrutiny meetings, I suppose this is one way to view the meeting after the event instead of turning up to the meeting in the first place as expected. However, this is not sufficient a reason to place this extra financial burden on the council at this time. I will therefore ask colleagues once again to reject this motion in full due to the cost implications and the logistical problems it brings.
Thanks for that councillor Bell. No, you can't councillor Robertson. No, no, it's not, not at the moment. We're talking about the amendment here. This is the amendment that's been put forward by councillor Francis.
Mr Mayor, yes, I do appreciate that, but the amendment in its entirety actually covers most of the points, the changes don't make any difference to it, Mr Mayor.
Just want to carry out the vote, that's all, that's required. So councillor Kennedy?
Thank you, Mr Mayor. Um, I'd just like to say that I totally refute the costs that being bandied about there. Technology's moved on so much now that somebody can stand in the corner of a room with a mobile phone and stream something literally for nothing. And to say that it's going to cost one hundred and sixty thousand pounds, and I get there are councillors that can't turn up to meetings. I'm one of them at times because I work full-time. Now, as far as I'm concerned, having these things available later, yes, there's, there's minutes, it's all documented and yes, I can go and spend hours of my time reading through them. Otherwise, I could just switch on YouTube and look at it and watch it, as could all the other members of the public who work, who can't attend these meetings. And, you know, there's, there's a lot of people in South Tyneside now don't get the time to do that because of work commitments. We haven't all got that freedom. Um, personally, I think it would be a real benefit to the likes of myself and other elected members to be able to see not only the meetings that they can't attend, but ones that they're not necessarily sitting on. And I believe it would benefit us in doing our job on award level. Um, but as far as the costs go, we've got to disagree with them. The amended motion said to investigate these things, we're not considering that, we're just shutting it down purely based on the fact that somebody in here says it's going to cost one hundred and sixty thousand pounds over the, over the year. That is complete and utter rubbish in today's age with the technology we have. Thank you, Mr Mayor.
Councillor Best?
Thanks very much, Mr Mayor. I listened with very much interest and thank you for the name check councillor Thompson. So here I am. A few corrections first, I find that the opposition have a very naive and very narrow view of what constitutes democracy. Um, you know, if, if YouTube is the only channel, excuse me, someone else sit down until the interruption. Thank you. Um, you know, if that's the only medium that we're looking into, um, you know, I don't think anyone who has a genuine interest and passion for democracy would deny that these kind of mediums are an asset to engagement in democracy, but there are the practicalities of it. And I think, you know, I can stand here and say this council has been at the forefront of the development of engagement of democracy, even, and I pulled it out tonight, two thousand and nine August, we have a scrutiny commission that spent months and months and months looking at webcasting and YouTube is not the answer if you're going to do that kind of thing properly. There are companies that specialise in actual council, you know, recording and live streaming webcasting of meetings because the technicalities of doing so are very complicated, you know, and it isn't just about standing in a corner with an iPhone, it really isn't. So I think that's rather naive. Um, a correction in terms of paragraph three of the actual motion, um, which says that in order to view council meetings, people must do so in person. As councillor Bell's already said, that is not actually true. Any member of the public has the right to attend, record and report on meetings. So that isn't the only way, you know, people can work in groups if they want to and they have done, as we all know, posted, you know, live streams of these meetings and so it happens anyway in some cases. Most of these meetings are planned and actually advertised a year in advance. It gives people plenty of time to work a diary around being able to attend the meetings like that councillor over there. I work full-time, I have a family, you know, I manage my life, I manage my work around the council meetings. But I think, you know, the other thing that's come out just there is the public engagement, the year of democracy. Yeah, and, you know, there was a shallow reference made to it, but underneath that there's a whole year of activities which is about bringing people into the council or in other places outside the council to get them engaged. That's the truth of the matter. Myself, councillor Bell, councillor Atkinson have already looked into the costs and I, you know, again, I think it's a bit disingenuous to doubt the figures that councillor Bell is quoting when they're actually correct. I mean, they are correct. Um, the minute is the legal record of the meeting, a video is not. And I think also we've all seen the council, the recordings even of these meetings, it doesn't show you the full chamber, it doesn't show you the nuances. The best thing to do is to participate and to my mind, democracy isn't, it's not a spectator sport, it's something you need to participate in. Watching it from afar is not the best way to engage. The voices of the people who are viewing are not being heard if they're just viewing it in a passive way. So I would encourage people to come along, scrutiny and CAFs, you can speak at these meetings, come along, participate. We've just moved some of them to different times of day so people can do that. A couple of other corrections, councillor Bell said that the meetings are verbatim, the minutes are verbatim, they are not verbatim, they're actually the opposite. And we are an opaque and transparent and open and accountable authority. Every meeting that we have, most of them are open to the public. Yes, there are exempt reports which have to be exempt by law. But I just refute, you know, that this, this is really the only, the only way forward. We've looked at it, I did say at the CAF meeting, paraphrasing correctly, I said it was on my wishlist that we recorded council meetings. I said that deliberately because we were already looking into it. It's been on my wishlist for a year now, discussed fully with the officers, taken away by the lead members, looked into, you know, it's, it's something that's always on the wishlist, it's been on the wishlist for fourteen years for this council and we will continue looking at it. But come along, participate properly, not behind a screen. Let's get engagement going properly in person. Thank you.
Point of information, Mr Mayor.
And your point of information councillor Thompson?
Thank you, Mr Mayor. My point of information relates, relates to two speeches that have just been made. Uh, councillor Best criticised the mention of...
Councillor Thompson, could you just sit down a minute? I'm just going to give you some clarification. If you're given a point of information as a member, you've got to briefly give your information to correct, to correct an alleged inaccuracy in a speech about the matter. It can clarify matters or question the facts and ask for a source. So when you're making a point of information, make your point of information, please.
Thank you. So I was clarifying the point of information and the point of information was related to the speech from councillor Best where she was criticising the use of YouTube mentioned in the motion as the correct way to do this. It's the correct way to do this because that is the official South Tyneside council streaming platform. And just the point of information also relates to councillor Bell's speech in which she is basing this figure of one hundred and sixty thousand pounds on recording full council. Most of the meetings and committees won't be held in this chamber and wouldn't be, that is the point of the amendment anyway, they wouldn't be streamed and recorded in the same manner. Thank you, Mr Mayor.
Thank you very much, just to clear it up councillor Best, would you like to reply to that councillor Bell?
Thank you, thank you, Mr Mayor, and thank you for that comment. What I'm seeing is that YouTube is... What I'm saying is that YouTube is not necessarily the chosen channel for the best engagement in democracy. There are specialist companies that we have investigated here in South Tyneside already, because the nature of this building is such that you have a listed building environment, cameras have to be fixed in certain places to be able to capture the entirety of the chamber, for one thing. There aren't, you know, the, the modern facilities that we have where projectors pop out of the ceiling and that kind of thing. If meetings happen in this building, they're in a listed building, and we have to take that into consideration. And there are actually companies, because we engaged with them here between two thousand and nine and now, you know, the past fourteen years, we've been looking into these things. This is not new, it's not something we haven't thought of before, it's not something we don't want to do, it's something that we haven't been able to do because the resources haven't been available. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. I mean, obviously, I can lend anybody a calculator if they want it. The motion actually does say that there are seventy-nine meetings going out to be live-streamed. If you multiply the nearly two thousand by seventy-nine, you get the hundred and sixty thousand. So yes, it will cost us that to stream those seventy-nine meetings, because as I say, the setup is for this chamber. Going out into the community means that we have to purchase mobile equipment, we've still got to have operators, we've still got to have IT support for that reason. It's still an extra financial burden to this council, which is not in the medium-term financial plan. And I would like to know where the opposition is going to cut services to get that money. Thank you, Mr Mayor.
Right, we're going to move, move on. Councillor Roberts, you've been waiting quite a while.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. Mr Mayor, we're just going to talk about the streaming of stuff, also we'd like to see the councillor Bell, she's always on her feet and she's always bright up with her figures. But to save money, every councillor in here receives just over eight thousand pound a year. Why have chairs, chairs of committees got to get ten thousand and fifteen thousand and twenty thousand? Why don't they just do the job they're paid for without having to get this extra money? And surely that would pay towards the streaming of different things? It's all about finance, but every councillor, Labour councillor in here, not so long ago, voted in favour of increasing their salary and also increasing their SRAs. If we didn't do that, we'd find the money to pay that for ourselves, but they don't find money to look after the public. It's a bit strange and a bit two-faced, really, thank you.
Thanks for that, councillor Roberts. Councillor Kilgore?
Thank you, Chair. I just have a couple of questions really and a, and a comment as well. So at, on the amended, the amendment to the motion, at point three, it mentions members of the public. So I'd just like to clarify as to who this motion is for. Is it to, is it for members' benefit? Or is it for members of the community, which is really what we're here to do, to serve? And as well, was there also a suggestion that the funding of it comes out of our green agenda funding? Which is something that this Labour group particularly are absolutely striving to bring in more funding to fund that green agenda, but also, I think it would be absolutely right of us to come back with regards to our SRAs and our standard allowances. When you attend meetings, I would hope that you would earn those allowances. If you don't, then there is a cost to this council and to our community when you don't turn up.
Point of information, Mr Mayor?
And the point of information?
Point of information is to be clarified, so it was that councillor Kilgore was speaking there, one of our seventy-personalities she has on social media? Thank you.
Come on, councillor Roberts, I'm not going to tolerate that kind of be, I'm not going to tolerate that behaviour, please, quiet, quiet, quiet. Councillor Purvis, please.
Thanks, Mr Mayor, colleagues. I'm vice-chair of West Shields CAF. We take our meetings out to the members, we cover Whiteleys, Biddeck Hall and Cleeden and East Bolden. We're made welcome in the Methodist Hall at Cleeden Village, we go to places like the Miners Welfare Action Stations, all saints, we take the meetings to the members. And if we were, the worst-attended meeting of the year is the last one where we have it in this chamber, because people won't come down from Biddeck Hall, Whiteleys, Cleeden and East Bolden to come to this chamber and listen. They like the meetings to be taken to where they are, and we find this works very, very well. We had a packed meeting the other day in, in the Tutorate Centre, lots of people coming along to hear what was going on, and we find that works well. And I had to be a bit amused when councillor Thompson was citing Thoroughick and Luton as two good examples. They're both teetering on the verge of administration, and I'm sure it'll be of infinite consolation to the good folk of those towns to watch their frontline services being cut online.
I get what's working. Well, thank you, Mr Mayor. Look, I've looked at this closely, I've looked at the, the amendment and the original motion. All our meetings are open to the public, and we want to be as close to the public as possible, we're members of the public ourselves, all of us. Of course, there's going to be a high cost to this, I think it's just common sense it's going to be. I don't know where the money would come from, but you know, if this was such a good thing and possible with the budgets we have, then I think our joining authorities would be looking at this. Now, I didn't know about Northumberland and Durham, I looked at the ones closest to us, Gateshead, Sunderland, North Tyneside. I noticed that North Tyneside Council approved a motion on the nineteenth of January to look at this and that, but haven't got any further with it. And probably because the same as us, they just haven't got the money. As has been mentioned, we've got community area forums, we've got five of them. People do come to them, I know it's small numbers, but if there's anything controversial or they want to speak, they come in larger numbers. A local plan at my mind, the East Shields and Whitburn One, fifty-five people turned up and said they all had a fair chance to speak. That, that's what people do, they come to the area forums, I encourage them all the time, as other people do, as other councillors do, I'm sure. And this, it's just, I don't think, Chair, the, Mr Mayor, that this should be referred, I'm sorry, I've got a throat, that should be referred to Cabinet again, it's been up before, I just think that we should actually just put this away. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. I just want to clarify that due to a clerical error, my name was noted against the amendment to this motion. Unfortunately, I'm unable to support this recommendation in the motions as amended or otherwise. In my consistent communication with the residents of West Park, this has not once been raised as a concern for engagement. I see foremost my responsibility in this chamber to represent their interests and concerns and ensure that their local authority allocates its financial resources with due care and attention. With that basis, I cannot recommend that the council incurs a significant expenditure. If this matter is reconsidered in the future, showing a clearer show of public support from elsewhere in the borough, particularly that it would improve community engagement and present value for money for the residents of South Tyneside, it would have my support then. Thank you.
Okay, is the amendment agreed? No. You have the, yes. What is your point of order? And I want it in the constitution? No, no, that's not a point of order. Councillor Francis? You haven't given me the point of order under the rules of procedure. Well, under the rules of procedure, what's your point of order? You haven't got a point of order. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. Just before I have my right to reply, I just had a question, and that question is, do we now, are we now allowing individual members to speak multiple times during a debate on an amendment or motion? And I think that's probably what councillor Robertson was trying to raise, and that, that has happened here, and that's, I just want to point that out, and that's not quite how it's supposed to work. And in terms of the right...
And just to be, to be very, very clear, I won't allow it.
Okay, that's appreciated, and I hope people take note of that. And just to pick up on a couple of the points that have been raised in response to this amendment, I'll start with the one over here from councillor Robertson, and I'll just point out that every, every political group here has submitted amendments in the past. Councillor Robertson has submitted amendments in the past, it's an important part of strengthening the policies that we agree here to be able to amend and improve things and not throw the baby out with the bathwater if there's a single thing that you disagree with, but if that was changed, you might support the, the body of the motion. I think that's important to make sure we're able to make strong decisions here. In terms of councillor Bell's claim that there were no changes, I'll read the exact change from Resolution One, which is potentially including a cost-benefit analysis and an examination of more cost-effective methods for filming and streaming committee meetings than those currently used, which would then question the figures that you're saying, because that's based on the current method rather than an exploration of alternate methods. And I think that makes it questionable at best using those particular figures that are based on the current method. I would object actually to the shaming of councillors who, who maybe don't attend every single meeting. There are councillors absent here tonight from the ruling group, I don't think we would want to, you know, castigate them for that. There are many reasons why people can't attend, not just councillors but members of the public, whether that's due to ill health, maybe it's because they've got working commitments or caring commitments. I don't think we want to send a message that people with those responsibilities are not the kind of people we want sitting on the council, they're exactly the kind of people we need sitting on the council. So I really think it's, it's not good to make those sorts of statements here. In terms of the budget, the claim that councillor Bell made in terms of the budget's been agreed, are we now saying that no changes will ever be made to a budget that's been agreed? I would find that very questionable as well, because that limits our ability to be agile and respond to need as it happens. We saw that in the last few years with the COVID-nineteen crisis, for example. In terms of councillor Best holding up a report from two thousand and nine, we've already talked about the future councils programme tonight, not the nearly fifteen years ago councils programme. So I think we need to move with the times and realise that things change, technology's changed massively since two thousand and nine. All that's being asked of here is a proper examination of the cost and the benefit of this, not just anecdotal or opinion-based arguments, but actually going away and doing a proper body of work on this, so we can come back and make an informed decision as council. Thank you.
Is the amendment agreed? We have dissenting voices that require a vote? Yeah, I think we'll have a show of hands. Have you got five people? Name vote? One running officer, please.
Elected members, this is just a vote on the amendment that's being proposed, so I'll read each of your names out, and if you could just let me know using the microphones if you're for, against or are abstaining from the amendment. Councillor Bell?
Against.
Councillor Barclay?
Against.
Councillor Best?
Against.
Councillor Brennan?
For.
Councillor Bristow?
For.
Councillor Carter? Councillor Clare? Councillor Cunningham? Councillor P Dean?
Against.
Councillor Estine?
Against.
Councillor Dixon?
Against.
Councillor Donaldson?
Against.
Councillor Ellison?
Against.
Councillor Ford?
For.
Councillor Forman? Councillor Forster? Councillor Francis?
For.
Councillor Gibson? Councillor Herbert? Councillor Huntley? Councillor Keegan? Councillor Kennedy?
For.
Councillor Kilgore? Councillor Lamont? Councillor Lisk? Councillor K Maxwell? Councillor N Maxwell? Councillor McHugh? Councillor Mellon? Councillor Milburn? Councillor Mill? Councillor Peacock? Councillor Porthouse? Councillor Potts? Councillor Proudlock? Councillor Purvis? Councillor Roberts?
For.
Councillor Robertson?
For transparency.
Councillor Smith? Councillor Strike? Councillor Thompson?
For.
Councillor Trina? Councillor Welsh?
Against.
Councillor Yeh?
Against.
So with the voting as tallied by the monitoring officer, it's thirty-two against and twelve for, so the amendment is lost. We now go back to the original motion. As, yeah, informed to us by councillor Thompson. So as the original proposer, councillor Thompson, do you wish to reply to the debate?
Thank you, Mr Mayor. Yes, I'd just like to reiterate those points around the estimates given by councillor Bell. Basically, basically on the most expensive worst-case scenario of what's happening in this chamber, when, when the meetings were proposed to record, wouldn't be in this chamber. And certainly, as the amendment showed, and I know we're not talking about the amendment, but it's about looking for solutions before you start bandying one hundred and sixty thousand pounds around. So I'd just like to re-emphasise that. And also, on councillor Bell, you stood up and you started talking about live-streaming. Can you tell me where in the motion it mentions live-streaming? No mention of live-streaming, so your basis of one hundred and sixty thousand seems to be based on something else. Thank you, Mr Mayor.
Thanks, councillor Thompson. Is the, the proposers reply to the debate, so is the motion agreed?
No.
Okay, colleagues, we'll have to take another vote on the original motion.
Elected members, I'll just...
So we'll have a raise of hands, can we have a short one? Have we got five people? Name vote against. You're on overtime tonight, one running officer.
Right, we know the drill, I'll read your names out, but this is on the original motion submitted by councillor Thompson. Councillor Bell?
Against.
Councillor Barclay? Councillor Best?
Against.
Councillor Brennan? Councillor Bristow? Councillor Carter? Councillor Clare?
Against.
Councillor Cunningham? Councillor P Dean?
Against.
Councillor Estine?
Against.
Councillor Dixon? Councillor Donaldson? Councillor Ellison?
Against.
Councillor Ford? Councillor Forman? Councillor Forster? Councillor Francis?
For.
Councillor Gibson? Councillor Herbert? Councillor Huntley? Councillor Keegan? Councillor Kennedy? Councillor Kilgore? Councillor Lamont?
Against.
Councillor Lisk? Councillor K Maxwell?
Against.
Councillor N Maxwell? Councillor McHugh? Councillor Mellon? Councillor Milburn? Councillor Mill? Councillor Peacock? Councillor Porthouse? Councillor Potts? Councillor Proudlock? Councillor Purvis? Councillor Roberts?
Four, because I've got no ahead.
Councillor Robertson?
Corrupt Labour, four.
Councillor Smith? Councillor Strike? Councillor Thompson?
For.
Councillor Trina? Councillor Welsh?
Against.
Councillor Yeh? Twelve in favour of the motion and three to against of the motion, so it's not...
So the motion's not carried, there's twelve for, for, for the motion and thirty-two against. So the motion's not agreed, thank you. Just a couple of quick things, coming on item ten, conclusion of business. In the future, could we stop these rude comments from various parts of the, of the, of the, the chamber? It seems to be the same people repeating the same remarks, and we are being publicly screened, it's being viewed, and I'm sure that the public will make their mind up on that particular issue. Today, I had the pleasure of attending, albeit fought, one of our most prestigious places in South Tyneside, and I had some young children from Hadrian Primary School there, and their behaviour was excellent. And I think I should take some people along with me to show what good behaviour is. So could I conclude the business of council today? And can I thank everyone, and I mean that, can I thank everyone for, those including in the public gallery for coming here and participating? In, and those watching from home, thank you for your attendance as well. And I've only got one more thing to say. If two people on my left-hand side would just keep quiet for absolutely ten seconds, the meetings concluded, good night. Good night.